So, welcome. This is the meeting of the Hyde Park Central School District, March 12th of 2020. Can I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person or corporation and collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law?
The move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? We are now in executive session. Okay, welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District Board of Ed meeting on March 12th, 2020 here at Netherwood Elementary School. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on over there, mister.
Okay. Upcoming events. For everyone to know, postponed is the FDR Spring Musical, The Addams Family. That's for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Hyde Park Education Foundation meeting will be done on March 18th at the district office at 10:00 a.m. And postponed is the Ralph R. Smith Play, Harry Potter. And postponed, or both of those are... What day is that? Yeah, what day was the matinee? Okay, well, it's both, they've both been postponed. The next Board of Ed meeting will be done on March 26th here at the district office. There is no agenda modifications. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
The move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. And do we have any pride?
One thing I was going to say was I attended one of the road shows from the state about the high school graduation requirements, and Carl was there and so forth. I saw a couple of our teachers also. I sat with one of our high school art teachers, Mr. B., and there were very lively discussions, and it was very well attended. Unfortunately, the rest of them are canceled for the rest of the time period, but it was a very good meeting.
We started early, Rachel, though.
I'm sorry.
We started early.
Take your time, I have a few.
Yeah, why don't you?
Well, we, I'll start with one. I received a letter, a little note, from Ryan Wade, one of our music teachers at Havilland Middle School, and he wanted to share with me that he's the representative for the Duchess County Music Educators Association. He had the opportunity to go to the Joseph R. Sugar Nisma Day in Albany, and it's an was an opportunity to advocate for music in our schools during Music in Our Schools Month, and he was the representative for Duchess County, so he was very proud and honored to advocate on the behalf of Duchess County Schools for music. We had the Leap into Comedy Night. I know Mike was there. That was the Hyde Park Education Foundation. I see a few other people who attended. I know Mary Beth was there. This was the first event for the Hyde Park Education to do something social. It was sold out. It was a clean comedy night, so very well attended. Our own former high school student, Dwayne Olson, was the emcee for the show. He did a phenomenal job, so it was an evening of a community gathering, and we all had a lot of fun.
And Rachel, do you have pride?
Yeah, I do have pride. It's coming up right now.
I can do one more if you need to settle in.
Yeah, sorry.
No, that's okay. This is our fault. Did you want to do the science fair, or you want me to do that one?
You can do that.
Okay. So, we had the district-wide STEAM Fair a week ago Friday. A special shout-out to Kim Niesel, who organizes this event. It was definitely a STEAM Fair, so we'll give some credit to Melinda DiMayo. In addition to the student projects, it is amazing to see the number of high school students who volunteer at all the activities. There were as many high school volunteers helping out as there were students participating. I will say that the, I'll announce the winners. Unless you want to do it. Do you have them?
I didn't, no, I didn't.
Okay.
I didn't get that, sorry.
I just didn't want to steal anything away from you, so good. Now you'll have plenty of time to get rested. Okay. In the elementary division, first place, North Park Elementary, Noah White. Also in first place was Casey, Cassie Batida. Two second-place winners for Violet Avenue, Trinity Jordan and Violet Avenue, Shiler Tan. Third place, won to Lily Broomehead at Violet Avenue, and also third place to Shannon Evans at Violet Avenue. In the secondary division, first place went to Havilland Middle School, Peyton McFarland. Second place went to Celeste Gorres, and third place went to Riley Martin. So, these are people that would, if they choose, they can participate in the Duchess County Regional Science Fair, so congratulations to all our participants. I know I saw several people there. It was a really wonderful evening.
Thank you for bearing with me. That's great to hear. I actually didn't, wasn't able to attend that, but that's very good to hear the students who won and everyone. I know that a lot of people did volunteer. I couldn't make that one, but I knew I had a lot of friends that went to it, so that's good. Okay, so, for Netherwood, we've got, they actually are doing an SPCA, drive organization, where they gather foods, toys, treats, and bedding, all to be donated for the Duchess County Animal Shelter. They're also, or they also did a blood drive support and a Valentine's for vets, where each student made a card thanking our veterans and wishing them a Happy Valentine's Day. And in addition, they also have a spring initiative, where each of their homeroom collects pennies for three weeks, and each week there's one winner. In the end, all the pennies collected go to the American Cancer Society, so it's basically a little initiative to get people active in donating to the society. And then also, two alumni are donating a Gaga Ball pit for recess, which is going to be so much fun for the kids, they're probably, they're going to love that, and it's really thoughtful of the alumni. And finally, for spring, they will be recognizing students of the month that display qualities of respectfulness, responsibility, and trustworthiness, so that's kind of a little update on what's going on here. And then, this one's kind of joint with HMS and FDR. Three kids from HMS and three kids from FDR went to the Ashakin Center for three days and nights to do workshops, presentations, and hikes, and sort of that thing, but it was basically all centered around how we could come up with solutions for climate change and also to educate more people about it, and they learned how to live more sustainably. Some of the stuff they learned about included food waste, which is really important, also pollinators for our bees, and then educating others how to take action and reach out to others and make a plan. There were over 100 kids, not only from neighboring districts, but also from New York City, England, and Sweden, so that's really, really interesting. And all the kids were really engaged, and they left feeling empowered and motivated, so that's really cool. And then, in FDR, as I think you mentioned this as I was walking in, we've sadly had to postpone a couple of things that we were all really looking forward to. This doesn't mean that they're canceled, though, but just postponed. One of them is the musical, The Addams Family, which I felt very lucky enough that I got to go see that today, because it was amazing, and I'm not going to give any spoilers. You guys just have to buy your tickets. They should be going back up for sale soon. I think the new dates are sometime around May 16th and May 17th, I think it was. It was really amazing. I got the chills a lot. I was, it was awesome, so definitely try and come out and see that. Our swim boys raced at states with Robert Reining placing 11th in the 100 freestyle and 13th in the 200 freestyle for the entire state. And Sarah Trainer qualified for state championships, and she raced in Staten Island, where she won the 1,000 meters for girls, public high school, and got second overall in the Federation, being beat out by only .04 seconds. And then, less than two hours later, she raced again and got third in the 1,500 meters. So, yeah, we had a lot going on, but that's just a little...
Any other pride? Okay, on to presentations. Superintendent's report.
Okay. So, I wanted to just take the opportunity to update the board and the public on some of what's been going on with the COVID threat, not only locally, but all surrounding us. So, the county executive, Marcus Malinaro, did make a press release this afternoon at 3:00 o'clock, so Duchess County now does have one confirmed case. They are saying that it is completely isolated, with the person being quarantined, and they're doing the concentric circles out to work with anybody who might have been in contact. So, the communication is direct from the Commissioner of Health to superintendents. If anyone in our district was near or around anyone who is infected, we would be notified immediately. And then, we would start the procedures of notifying the staff, and as Cuomo announced, we would then shut down for 24 hours and investigate and disinfect. But we are not there, and hopefully we won't be, but there are a lot of thoughts about that being inevitable. We have had a number of meetings with all concerned staff to plan and process and manage, and I have to say that in every meeting, they have been incredibly productive. First was with our facilities, and Elliot's here, so I'd like to thank Elliot and Will Machado, the president of the CSEA Union. So, many cleaning protocols have been put into place for disinfecting, not only our facilities, but our staff, our buses. The staff was all trained, and ongoing training continues. We did let people know that they may see custodians with masks and goggles. That is not for COVID. That is because we have instituted the use of diluted bleach and cleaning, so it is protective personal protective equipment for the people utilizing those cleaning procedures. But we thought it would be helpful if the staff and the students all knew that those masks are for people using the cleaning products. We've been communicating with staff and families ongoing, not only information about COVID, but where to find factual information. All of the information that we send out is vetted by the CDC, as well as the Department of Health. The superintendents have had two meetings with the Commissioner of Health for Duchess County, as well as the Assistant Commissioner of Health, as well as the Commissioner of Emergency Response. So, the lines of communication, and today we also had a conference call with Marcus Malinaro, the county executive. So, the lines of communication are open, clear, and ongoing, so we feel confident that in our county and for our school district, the notification process and system is in We also met with our health professionals. We met with our nurses, our district, what's Pat Freeman's title again? The nurse practitioner?
Practitioner.
And Dr. Rutter, the school physician. From that meeting, we gained a lot of insight. At that meeting was also food services and facilities, as well as myself and Aviva and some principals and Elliot Sheldman, and James was here, Jim Daley. And from that meeting, we are coming up with a system to specifically educate students in a systematic way of what the proper protocols are, also to reassure students that this is not affecting the young. They could get sick, they could get the flu, but that this particular virus, so far, you know, we're trying to make them feel safe. We wanted to make sure that they knew proper protocols for cleaning and distance, and also to reiterate especially to secondary students that there's a lot of misinformation out there, and we will be providing you with the information directly from the Department of Health. We met with technology to review all of our systems for off-site operation, so we are prepared and have redundancy, so that we can continue with payroll and any data reporting requirements from home or off-site. We tested these systems to make sure that they're operational, so that when somebody brings a laptop home and we need to run payroll, we can run payroll. We also made sure there are backups for everybody. I'd like to thank Linda for that. I'd like to thank Rick Wirt from the Technology Department for, you know, getting us all set up for that. We're monitoring very carefully any requirements from the State Education Department about attendance. There's very little guidance on that right now. We do know that if we need to close for the 24 hours, should we be notified that we needed to be closed, that that would not count against us. I'd like to give a special shout-out to Mary Basgattergood, the president of the Hyde Park Teachers Association. We put in a phone call to her to see if we could reorganize the training day for tomorrow, so that instead of doing what we planned to do and having guest speakers and workshops, if we could collaborate on putting together lesson plans and study, units of study, so that should we need to shut down for an extended period of time, the materials would be in the hands of students. So, by the end of the day tomorrow, we will have a plan. I'd also like to acknowledge Jen Kreiser-Aimey, I thought I saw her come in, the president of the Administrators Union, who will also help organize all of that work, then collect all that work, and then the administrative team will make sure that the work gets into the hands of the students. And of course, Aviva here has been doing the yeoman's work on the academic side as well. So, as of tomorrow, our students will be prepared with some materials should we be closed down for a couple of weeks, that they can continue their education or at least reinforce some learning. It's not a perfect system. We certainly don't want students to be put in a situation where they feel that they have materials in front of them that they're not sure what to do with, and if they don't have access to their teachers, what will they do? So, we are going to be careful in our messaging that this is just to help them through a time period where they could continue their learning, but we don't want to stress them out either. On March 23rd, the next, is the next district SAVE meeting, and that's where we have our emergency plans, our emergency procedures. The emergency procedures for this type of a threat are very thin, if you will, but they are there. So, the district SAVE co-chairs, Aviva and Bob Bloom, will be taking a look at our emergency response plans for this type of pandemic situation. One big question that has come up is immune compromised staff, and they really need to work with their physicians and, you know, get advice of whether or not they should be in a public setting. As you heard, many of our events are postponed. Additionally, you will see more of that during the press conference today with Mark Malinaro. They announced that they, that all social gatherings should be canceled. Social gatherings are defined as a more or less looser, unorganized group of people of 20 or more. Schools are not an unorganized social gathering, so yes, we will still continue to bring children in, they will still be in classrooms, they'll still go to lunch together, but anything really over the size of 20, where you don't know where the people have been or where they're coming from, are canceled and/or postponed. So, what you can expect by tomorrow is that we'll be making an announcement tomorrow that athletic contests will be canceled. That is a consistent message that will be delivered throughout Duchess County from all of the superintendents. Practices will still occur, contests won't. We are looking at facilities use. We have canceled outside use of our facilities just for the weekend, just to get us through, but we anticipate closing our facilities while we're not using them, because we have all of these disinfecting protocols in place, and if we invite an outside group in and don't have a plan to disinfect again after they leave, we've pretty much wiped out any efforts we've had, we've accomplished. We'll be looking at the parent-teacher conferences for next week. It's most likely that those will not occur. So, as many of you who have relatives and many of our board members who are in the workplace, you're seeing drastic changes in the workplace. We anticipate drastic changes in our workplace, with the exception that right now, we will, we are, and will remain open for education and students coming to school. Field trips have pretty much been canceled and/or postponed when possible. As of my last communication to the administrators, and we canceled the field trips to places where there were public gatherings, and we were keeping a few on the docket where it was just one individual class going to a particular library where no other, you know, it wasn't 100 schools going to the same event. I'm not sure that we will be able to maintain even some of the smaller field trips. Our commitment is to keeping all lines of communication open in a timely and expeditious fashion. As we hear information, we will share information. There are still some unanswered questions. We have attempted, as I said, to meet with every group of leadership in the district to have sit-down face-to-face, have an opportunity to do question and answer, and to take care of that to the best of our abilities. Those meetings will be ongoing. We feel that we are prepared for both a short-time closure, as well as in the event that we needed to close for a couple of weeks. We feel that we're prepared to service our educational community under that situation, and I think, as we've all heard from everybody who stands up in, in front of the public on this topic, our true job is to stay centered, to stay focused on the facts, and to protect our children. And I don't know if the board had any questions?
Any questions?
Or if I missed anything? Okay, thank you.
So, next up, we have a Netherwood Elementary School update from Principal Daley.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to start by thanking all my Netherwood crew for coming out today, as well as my administrative colleagues. Been a part of the Wappingers District for 15 years. It's been really special to join Netherwood and the Hyde Park Central School District. I couldn't have asked for a better building to join or a better group of individuals, so that starts with Dr. Rycheck and Deputy Superintendent Aviva for setting the tone for everyone. I really can't thank you guys enough for coming tonight to support Netherwood and all we've got going on. Special acknowledgement to Deb. When I start to ramble, she's going to grab me by my keys and refocus me, as my staff will know. All right. Here we go, that's me. Oh, I skipped one already. So, I just want to take two seconds really and thank Connie Freer. She did this drawing about 10 years ago now for the 50th birthday of Netherwood, and Connie is one of our one-to-one aides here. And when I saw it above the cafeteria outside, it got me thinking that a lot of times, if you don't take a couple minutes to get to know your crew, then you really don't know what strengths they possess. She might be just a one-on-one aide, and I shouldn't say just a one-on-one aide, she's a one-on-one aide during the day, but she is a fantastic artist, and I really think this is an excellent depiction of Netherwood, and we want to make sure that we celebrate her contribution to the 50th birthday of our school. Going to our mission statement and our motto, the Hyde Park mission statement we always start every faculty meeting with. Netherwood mission statement was worked on last year with Ms. Jammon as part of the BLT, and this year, as a faculty and staff, we started with our hopes and dreams. So, on the bulletin board out in front of the lobby, you'll be able to see, it says, "What are your hopes for the 2019-20 school year?", and outlined around all that are notes from our parents that we had at our parent, back-to-school night in September. We're really focused on our why as a group, and we all agree that we want all of our kids to grow. And at a school, you always think growing is in reference to academics, but really, our kids grow in many ways other than academics. They grow socially, emotionally, physically, the non-quantitative ways, if you will. We're really trying to make sure we're focusing on growth for all of our kids and all of our staff, and our motto for the year is being safe, respectful, and responsible, which I'll get to when we talk about our PBIS initiative. Right now, as of today, we have 280 students at Netherwood, and that's a breakdown of our demographic information from the state website. A couple of fifth graders are also on there. Getting to our ELA data, you see three bars, grade three, four, and five, from 2016, 17, all the way to 18, 19, and 16, 17, and 17, 18 are green and gold, which are our district colors, and 18, 19 was just blue, because I like blue, as you can tell. So, you can see, the data shows an upward trend in third grade, and we're working with our fourth and fifth grade crew to have the blue bars, which will lead to the 19-20 school year, continue that same upward trend. As a school, the last set of bars over to the right is our entire building, over the course of the last three years, for level three and four students who are proficient in the English, English Language Arts Assessment. Next is our math data. Very similar trend. Our third-grade team did a really outstanding job last year, and that's going to hopefully continue in fourth and fifth grade over the next couple of years. School-wide, you see the last three sets of bars over to the right, we have an upward trend from 16, 17 through last year, 18, 19, so we like to see that steady increase, and we'll hopefully that will continue in years to come with our math and ELA assessment. Again, these are the students who are proficient scoring at levels three and four here at Netherwood. Last year, we had about 126 students take the math test. Come on. There we go. This is our science data. Pretty much, it remains about level, anywhere from 89% to 91% of our kids scoring level three and four, and science is not a three-grade assessment, it's a fourth-grade assessment currently, fourth and eighth grade. Within the next couple of years, this will be moved to the fifth grade. Similar results will be hopefully expected with the number of kids who are scoring proficient at levels three and four when that science exam becomes a fifth-grade assessment. This is our refusal information. It's three years of refusal information from 16, 17, to 18, 19, and you'll notice a trend in, a downward trend in the number of students who are refusing the assessments. in, a downward trend in the number of students who are refusing the assessments, which hopefully that will continue this year, so that way we can have a real true picture of how we're performing on those assessments, be it ELA, math, and science. And that will also help with our accountability across the state. When the state gives you your results, you get a weighted index and a core index, and the numbers are different because we're all mathematical people. So with the weighted, you are assessed, your accountability is assessed on the number of students who are supposed to take the test versus the core, the number of students who actually took the test. So those two different numbers when it comes to our SSA accountability there. So the refusal information does play a role on our accountability status with the state and the state education department. All that was just supposed to stop it, was a downward trend. Told you I'd ramble. We go to our maps information. I'd like to highlight two grades, first grade and third grade last year, the 18, 19 school year. Did an outstanding job, highly effective in our MAPS VARC score at the end of the year, from the beginning of the year in September when the kids took the test, and then again in June for their post-test. The scale is 18 to 20 is highly effective, 15 to 17 is effective, 13 to 14 is developing, and 0 to 12 is ineffective. That scale is set by the state. Overall, as a building, we had a score of 17, which is an exceptional job by the staff here at Netherwood. Those guys deserve to be recognized. Kindergarten we're working on, and we'll hopefully have those 14s and 13s go into this 16 to 17 to 18, 19 range in the years to come. The initiatives for the school here, I just want to highlight our Tier One focus. Tier One is the instruction that all of our kids get. Every single child in Netherwood receives Tier One instruction. As a district, you guys have heard, all the principals have talked about our K2 Phonics Initiative, so that's obviously happening in our lower hallway. We've really made a concerted effort to align our instruction to workshop model and reading and writing. We even have a couple of classrooms that have attempted to implement a workshop in math, starting with a real short mini lesson, and then allowing the kids to explore on their own, reading on their own, writing on their own, and applying those skills that have been taught throughout the whole year. And while the kids are applying that information on their own, the teachers are conferring, they're working with small groups of kids, and really that Tier One focus, because the kids are in the classroom for six and a half hours a day, is where the weather meets the road, where the magic happens. We have kids that go out for AIS, but they're out for 30 to 40 minutes, and that's going to be supplemental instruction. It's not going to be used to supplant our Tier One instruction. So our Tier One is our real important Core One instruction that's happening in every classroom throughout the course of the day. So we've really made a concerted effort to do that. We've had a couple before school, PDU's on RTI and on Tier One, and those will continue throughout the course of the year. And we are targeting, with the help of Kim Meiser, our math and science person, we've really targeted our math AIS and using the MAPS Scales Locator, that's part of our universal screener. It can really target where kids are performing, where they're struggling, and where they need to be enriched with regard to our math instructions. Kim has done a really good job of that. And we have had three teachers who have gone in collaboration with the Wapinders District to ordnance Goringham training, and they've been able to come back to Netherwood and have rolled that out with our students here, so our kids are benefiting from that as well in the ELA realm. Technology and integration. One thing I really want to highlight in tech integration is Mrs. Dorn has done an outstanding job. Our school librarian, our library media specialist, came to me with an idea to have live-streamed morning announcements. So we have our own Netherwood news crew every morning in the library, and they take over. They have all the highlights, all the important announcements, the lunch menu, everything happens live-streamed with kids. They sit with one of our Chromebooks, the camera on the Chromebook displays throughout the entire building. Everyone's able to see it, and there's usually a student who has kind of like the cue cards, if you will, behind the computer. So the fifth graders rotate every week on who is going to be presenting the morning announcements. So tech integration has been huge, and with her efforts, we've been able to do that, and we have shared it with a couple of other principals in the district, and hopefully that will take hold across the district. So I want to thank Mrs. Dorn. We have two BLT goals. First BLT goal is to create school-wide PBIS, and the second was to select a new mascot for Netherwood. Being the navigators was a little challenging to explain to a five-year-old. Kindergarteners really didn't understand what a navigator was. So student council came together, we had four choices to choose a new mascot from, and the student council kids chose our Nighthawk, so you see it over to the right, the green and yellow Nighthawk, which is in reference to FDR and our green and gold colors. We didn't want to be red and blue, we're a unified district, so we figured we'd go with the green and gold colors, and all the kids really enjoy the Nighthawk logo so far. And we have a school spirit wear store that is open as of 6:45 PM tonight, and will remain open through April 17th for purchasing spirit wear. I do want to give a really big recognition to our BLT. The BLT has met every month for the better part of an hour and a half, two hours, to come up with our school-wide PBIS program and system. And that took, my staff at Schieferd, probably about eight working days to do. So the amount of work that the BLT has taken home in between each meeting, from September to October, from October to November, and so on, has been extraordinary. Every month, the BLT comes with information. We now have our school-wide matrix, we have lesson plans that we'll be able to roll out, we have information for parents. Our BLT has really worked extremely hard, and that consists of the staff members here at Netherwood and parents. And the parents have been just as involved, if not more so, than the staff here, because they've really bought into the BLT goals of creating school-wide PBIS.
PBIS is...
Positive Behavior Intervention and Support, sorry. So the goal of PBIS is to shift our focus away from negative behaviors, to really celebrate the positive behaviors when kids are meeting our expectations. And our expectations, like I started with our motto, will be, at Netherwood, we are safe, respectful, and responsible. And there's a matrix that we will teach all the kids what it means to be safe, respectful, responsible in our common areas, which are out of the playground, in the hallways, in the cafeteria, and on the school buses. So everyone has a level of playing field, and you'll hear those sorts of terminology. And just a real quick example, instead of saying to a student, you know, "Stop running", which has a negative connotation, we've shifted our vernacular to say, "Walking feet, please", and it accomplishes the same thing, but the message is received in a more friendly way and in a more positive tone. And we've started to do little things like that. We haven't rolled out the entire system yet. The goal is to have that up and running through September, but the little pieces that we have been able to share with the kids have taken hold pretty well. So that's our BLT, those are our BLT goals for this year. So our really real pride, you heard Rachel talk a little bit about some of the things that we've done throughout the course of the year. Student Council is a phenomenal group of eight young men and women, and they have kept me on track. They come every Friday, 12:40, we have lunch together, and we have our student council meetings. So they came up with the idea of having the SPCA drive, having our penny wars, which is going to be coming up in the spring, the Valentine's for vets, and we're going to have a school spirit week coming up as well. And the kids are fantastic, they do a great job. Another thing I do want to highlight in our pride is, we made a pretty good shift in our scheduling in September to create a dedicated win period. That win stands for what individuals need. So during that time, we have all of our pull-out services, our AIS reading and math, and it gives our teachers an opportunity to enrich those kids who could benefit from enrichment. So we're providing the supplemental services that go along with our Tier One instruction in ELA and math, but we also have kids who are, you know, in second grade being challenged with inquiry, designing different things. We had a young lady who came in and designed an entire new playground for us on her own because of the work that Mrs. Manning had done in second grade. So we're really trying to allow kids the freedom to discover things on their own that they're interested in, and pursue ideas and projects that really are their choice. It allows us to enrich kids as well as provide the students to those kids who need it. Okay. Our community actions, we have a bunch of community actions going on. The Pleasant Valley Fire Department, Hyde Park Police Department are involved in all of our safety meetings. We have our Thursday Game Day, which has been on hold for the winter, but it's going to start up again in April, and that is run by Debbie St. Ange, who doesn't have any kids at Netherwood anymore, but she's really dedicated. So every Thursday morning, the hour before school, she comes with checkers, chess, nails, and a piece of PVC, and kids are able to design and make and create things on their own. And it's really a fantastic thing to see kids taking advantage of. Again, I put student council there as well, because they have reached out to all of our community agencies and have done a really good job of engaging the community and making sure that Netherwood connects with everybody. In the future, I hope to have the Marist College football team here to become reading buddies for our kids. I've already talked to Coach Barrydy, just kind of working our way through that right now. They are, the football team does visit Violet Avenue, and they are working with the City of Poughkeepsie Schools, but Coach Barrydy and I are going to pick probably Friday afternoons from 2:00 to 3:30 to have anywhere from 10 to 25 guys come, and they'll be able to read with our kids. And it's really an awesome thing to see, these six-foot-five, six-foot-six, 300-pound offensive and defensive linemen, they walk down the hallway with a five-year-old, and then they sit down and they read with them, and the kids love it. It's really a great program, so hopefully that'll get started next fall, once we get past our current medical situation. And that's it. So that's a picture on the left of a couple of kids on Thursday morning game night, and on the right is the Grinch and Dr. Rycheck. Anybody have any questions?
The one on the right is...
That's for you to answer.
Not to want to start a controversy, but...
You're welcome.
I was thinking about mascots, and other districts west of here have gone to one mascot for the entire district, and I was wondering if that might not be something we might think about. It would uniformly think that the same mascot would be on elementary, middle school, and high school, I know that's heresy, but I think it might be worth looking at.
Well Doug, we actually have started that conversation, we're really moving in the direction of trying to see what it would take to unify our colors first, and Jim has introduced the green and gold with his mascot, and Netherwood right now is, and I could be wrong, and email me or shout at me later during public participation, but there's less of a connection with the colors at Netherwood than at some of the other elementary schools. So Jim, in his assessment of Netherwood, they're not really attached to blue or red or, so we're trying to chip away at unified colors throughout the school. Violet Avenue will probably be our toughest nut, but we'll figure that out. Ralph R. Smith is red. There's a lot of Ralph R. Smith band members, there's a whole Facebook group from former marching band members that might have an issue with the red. But our first attempt is to go to unified colors. Our second thing is we're slowly replacing the eagle with our Four Seas logo, so that would be a unifying symbol. We have not gotten to the mascot, but we can put that on the docket. We've been trying to find the balance of not pulling the rug out from underneath individual school's identity, and so we figured we'd start with trying to at least unify the colors first. But mascot would be, could be next, but we're going to start with colors and the consistency of replacing the eagle with the Four Seas logo.
Okay.
How'd I do, Jim?
Very good.
Okay.
Do we have the Nighthawk for like a year at least?
So Jim, how many parents did you have on your BLT?
Two, Ms. Doughty and Mr. Turner.
And they were for the logo?
Yeah.
That's close to the Hawks.
Yes, close to the Havlin.
We had the Nationals, North Stars, the Knights, or the Nighthawks.
We have Eagle Hawk and Nighthawk, huh?
Yep.
And Owls. If we could just say we're birds.
Birds, yeah, I like it. We could do something like that.
Is there any other questions? Okay, thank you, Principal Daley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next presentation, the Proposition 2 Bus Replacement Plan by Director of Transportation, George Treadwell.
George is getting settled in. I don't know if I gave a shout-out to Linda, I mentioned payroll and the meetings, and I don't know if I gave you a... I did, good. Phew, I mean, really, seriously, what most people really want to know is, you know, and for all the right reasons, about sustaining their life, are we going to be able to do payroll? And Linda spearheaded that, and certainly George and his crew have responded very positively to the whole disinfecting of the buses and, you know, been totally right on board, so thank you.
It's kind of been a chore, but we're getting there. We're just about done with the first round of it, so. Good evening, and I'd like to thank the board, the administration, and the community for supporting this bus prop for year after year. And it's so important because we've moved to a 12-year plan. Probably about 2013 or '14, we went to a 12-year plan from the 10-year plan, and we've been able to keep that going. That was one of my things. I have no problem moving to 12 years, because we're almost at 12 years now with the replacement the way it was. And one of my things was, let's not make this a 14-year plan. And we have not done that. We've stayed right at the 12, it's been great, and it's just good, it helps us keep the students safe every day. So it's a wonderful thing. Just a little bit of facts here, you know, I show these every year, there's a lot of changes, obviously, in the enrollment number. We're down about 150 kids from the last year, but in the same note, we've been dropping the seats. We went from the 72 passengers, we've dropped down to 66 passengers to move with that enrollment. And then we lost some schools, going to school, some of closed and whatever, and people have brought kids back to the public schools, and the work sites are down a little bit. We did increase the bus route this year, and that's a function of the homeless and foster students. We had kids so far out of district that we had a van that was a spare, and we just put it in line to do that, because it was costing so much money to have a contractor do that when we didn't have the equipment to do it. The sport and field trips have increased quite a bit there, and the approximate miles, 1.4 million, that has gone up a couple hundred thousand from last year to this year, somewhere is in that neighborhood, but we're still in that 1.4 million area. Okay, transportation mandates. This is an area that's, this is where our money, what costs us our money here. And some of the big ones, the non-public, that's been there a long time, and that 15 miles, there was talk about moving it, but that has stayed there. The 50 miles for our special needs students, that's one that really drives our cost in transportation. Some of it is down south. We've got five contracted buses that we do, we work with a contractor for that does that work for us. The statutory 50-mile radius for transporting homeless students to the school of origin. This one is really getting expensive for us to do and difficult for us to do. Again, we had to go out to contract last year to do a couple of them. This year, we haven't had to go out to contract, but we've kept it in-house, but we've really extended our vehicles. They're running around a lot out to Beekman, Highland, and there's a bunch of sites that we're running around to. And then the other one here, it's a statutory requirement for foster students for the school of origin, that's done by the local Department of Social Services. This one is getting us to the similar thing, where we're using all of our extra, wherever we can, we've got this graph that Donna can look at on her machine, and it shows us who's got two minutes. It shows us who's got a half hour. So we look at that, and we're using that up, and we're really, we're kind of running low on that. We were just looking for a change the other day, and there's not a lot of space in between the two, the different routes that people have to cover this, so it's just really added a lot of stress to us. And then school equipment, seat belts on all large buses, folks, this is coming. You know, every time we have one of those bad accidents, and those real serious accidents, everybody's moving to mandating seat belts. In a typical, without having a big, a major bus accident, we've been, there's a district here, we've had, students are okay in that setting by going forward, hitting the seat, and then staying in your compartment, we call it compartmentalization. But when you have a more serious accident, then the kids are bouncing around inside the bus, that's where the injuries are coming from. So this is something that's probably, we're going to see down the road, and that's going to be an expensive venture. It's going to be quite expensive. We're going to go from probably three people to a seat to two people to a seat, and how are we going to, you know, increase and get move the same amount of kids that we're moving right now? So, you know, that's just something that's coming at us, and we're going to have to definitely put an expense towards that. Bus replacement program, again, we talk about the student safety, it's an SED DOT recommendation. The big thing that I wanted to talk about here is the rust piece. We've kind of tried to slow that down a little bit, no pun intended, but because we've gone into a program where we have the buses, we spend $2,500 for a bus over the life of the bus, and we get, they come back 10 times and recote that every year. And so we've got, we're up to about 17 buses... so we've got, we're up to about 17 buses that are in that program right now. It's part of the capital project. We put $2,500 per bus in there. And then we started this year, I started doing all the new vans we were getting. Why are we just doing the big buses was my thought. So they cost us 130 bucks to do the van and it's going to save us some money down the road on the long end, especially with the 12 years that we're, we're keeping them. The gas diesel update, this is just a quick thing. Really, there's no surprises here. We've got about 129,000 miles on these gas buses right now, literally having no mechanical problems. Where we, with the diesel buses, we always had those, those issues that we have with them with solenoids and all, all those things. And we're not having that right now with these, thank God. The only problem we do have, you know, I can't say we've had no issues, but we've had a couple of electrical issues. One early this year we had, and then we have one, we just had one now, we just took away. It's under warranty. They're going to take care of it all, but that's really all we've had. No motor issues, none of that to this point. So that's worked out. The fuel pricing, we knew when we went through this and we went through this, the committee that looked at this, we knew we were going to, there was going to be a difference in the, in the pricing of the fuels. There was a whole difference. So this year, we've spent on the gas, so up to today, $1.96 a gallon's been the average for gasoline. The diesel is 208 right now. That's right through March 4th. So there's about a 12 cents difference there. We're about 40, about 40,000 mile difference in the miles between the gas buses and the diesel buses, just the large ones because that's what we're really looking at. And then the miles per gallon, there's really no surprise here. When we went through that committee, we knew that we were, we're getting seven or eight with our diesel and we knew we were going to probably get in the neighborhood of four to five with the gas buses. And that's what we're, what we're seeing right now. Somewhere's in that four to five range. So the numbers we were given were pretty accurate. The seven to eight were our own numbers, what we were doing. But the four to five estimate that they were giving us has been pretty accurate. So just a little update on where we are with that. This is just the history of the bus purchase since 1988, '99 and the amounts. That doesn't include the aid, those amounts you see there. And then there it is. We're trying to keep it easy. Those numbers, the five, 10, 10, we're trying to keep that number as balanced as possible, using our bus replacement plan that we have and the, and the strategy that we have. And this year, we're going to see a little bit of a difference. Actually, we went through that committee on the changing it from 10 to 12. We said it was going to take us a while to reap some of those benefits. And it's starting to come back at us a little bit. Here, we're just talking about the cost for these buses. And the obvious thing is, you know, you really don't need to say it is, the longer you keep them, the more the parts cost goes up. And if you look at those numbers there, they're getting pretty high as these things get older. We're looking at buses that are almost, that are 13 years old, but that's where they fell in the plan. So these buses that we're looking to replace this year, these six, they're about 940,000 miles they've driven in their career. They're averaging about 157,000 miles per bus and their average age is about 12.6 years of age for them buses. So we're a little bit over it, but it's just the way that this has fallen and we're trying to, to work with that. And that's just the totals of it. I mean, there's some big numbers there when you look at the parts costs over the 13 years that we've, we've done them buses. And most of that, folks, is really on the, on the end, we're getting it. That's really where that's coming. And then here's the recommendation for this year. We're looking to replace one, we're actually replacing a 72 passenger. We're looking to replace that with a 66 passenger, just one. We're looking to replace 130 passenger van that's got about 180-some thousand miles on it and starting to cost us some money that was in there. 320 passenger vans, two of them are in the 150s. The third is over 210,000 miles. So we, that one did pretty well for us. It's costing us a lot of money right now, the rust issues galore with that particular vehicle. We're looking to replace one wheelchair van. Basically, what we do with the wheelchair vans, replacements there are, we keep, once we, we got a certain amount of number, we retire one, we make it a spare all the time. Doesn't run a lot, but it runs as we need it. We got to have that spare. And so what we're doing now is we're looking to replace that, that one. We'll move this new one into, into the active role every day and we'll move the oldest one or whichever one were costing us the most money into the, into the spare role. So that's the total cost of the six vehicles. The 394, the district state aid is down a little bit. Went down, it was 61.1 and it went down to 59.9. So that's the aid that we'll get back. So the total Prop 2 cost this year is 158,336, which is down quite a bit. This is, this is a bargain one for us. But we're going to see numbers not quite this good probably moving forward as I looked at this while I was working on it. But, you know, we're going to be, somewhere's in that 300,000 to that area hopefully, pending, you know, what happens in the next school year and what buses have to be replaced. So I'm glad, any questions?
Yeah. Can you explain, because you've explained it multiple times every year, the number of seats we have available versus the number of students. We have 25% empty seats. Can you explain to everybody why that is?
That's really not empty seats per se. Every bus run, we look at it this way. Our high school run, let's say they've got 30-some kids on it, the high school run. Their next run may have 20 kids on it, but then the elementary run will probably have 30 to 40 children on it. So when you, when you look at it that way, there's no way between the time that you have in between runs, the mileage that we're covering, that you can do it. Probably the best answer that you, when you mentioned that, the best answer I got for that is our 100 district buses that we have in, just all of our schools without private parochial involved. We have 100 buses and we're transporting 3,319 kids. So we're averaging 33 kids on just our elementary bus, on our district buses for our district schools. So, you know, it's always going to be different. You know, some of them are out in Clinton picking up a large area and they're only picking up 19 or 20 kids. But that bus, that's still going to be a big bus for the most part because they're high school kids and you never get that many on a 30. So there's just many reasons like that, that it's going. It's not a perfect science when we look at this, but it is, sometimes you're driving down the road and you see a bus and it looks empty, you know. So, but that's the reasoning for it. When you look at the numbers, we're averaging pretty much at the high school right now, 32 high school kids on 34 buses. So that's the average that we're routing for. So there, you know, Havilin's, that is a little bit less. It's like 30, 29 or 30 kids. But, you know, that's where we're at. But that's still more than we would need, more than any van that we could get would, would hold. So hopefully that was helpful, Jeff?
Yep.
George?
Go ahead. I would just say, I get asked this question a lot, so I just wanted you to explain it.
You mentioned you're going from a 72 passenger, passenger to 66?
Yes.
In light of the seat belting, wouldn't you want to stay at 72 just because you know that's coming?
Uh, that's a good question, but really the, the way we're looking at it is, I don't know where that is. You know what I'm saying? I don't know how long that's, we're...
Is it going to be in the next 12 years?
Probably, could be. Don't know that, you know. But, but the, the go to the 72, we're looking at a lot more expense upfront with that. That particular vehicle really isn't going to, at this point, that's not even comes into play. Doesn't even come into play really with it because we're not, we're going to still be ordering it the same way. See what I'm saying? Well, when the new ones come in, they're going to be totally different. So that doesn't, that's not going to, if we order a 72 this year, by the time it goes, they're, they're going to grandfather that through the system. You know what I mean? It'll only be all new buses that are going.
So you're not going to have to put seat belts into...
No. They, they probably will not make you retrofit. It'll be, all buses from January 1st, 2021 will have to have the shoulder, the hardness on it.
Order the 72 passenger bus next.
There's about, top of my head, a 7,000 or 8,000 different purchase price difference on that. It'll be a little less than that because we're getting the gas engine versus the diesel engine, which is obviously more expensive.
George, when they do the, have you seen the model of the seatbelt buses? Is it now not going to be the tall seats, but the shorter seats with the shoulder?
It'll be the same tall seat. It'll look kind of like your car for the most part. Now I come out of the back of your, backseat of your car and they come over and they buckle. It'll be like that on both corners of the buses coming over for the two seats.
I'm trying to picture a first grader and, or myself, you know. I just, I don't know. I guess...
Those are part of the fights right there. That's part of it. How are we, who's going to buckle a, a elementary kid or a kindergarten student? Who's going to be able to buckle them? And who's, you know, the driver's really not going to be responsible if the child's not buckled. But there's just so many things in the, that they're trying to work through. But the bottom line is, that would be much safer for all kids. And, you know, that's, that's it. And they're going to, we'll work through that. Is it like, you know, we work through all, we're working through right now. You know, it'll get worked through and it'll get done. But it's definitely going to be an expense. There, there's a lot of money attached to that.
Any other questions? Thank you, George.
Thanks.
Thank you, George. And I just have to say that I've always loved his name. I think it's a good omen. He's been with the district for what, how many years now, George?
22.
22. And with the last name of Treadwell, I think it's just a good omen.
Okay. Can I have a motion for public participation?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. If you would like to address the Board, please go to the microphone and state your name. Public participation is limited to three minutes per person. Seeing none, public participation is now closed. We'll move on to Board discussion. And do you want to talk about the...
Sure.
Second.
The, of course, along with the budget vote, there is the election of new Board members. You can pick up packages now. Jeff and I are on the, our, our terms are up. I am not running again. So there will be one open seat. Jeff will be running, right?
Yes.
You can get a, a packet from...
Around the table.
Oh, tonight if you're here, you can get one at the table. But if you're not here and you want one, you come to the district office and Jay will be happy to give you one. So I hope, we did have one gentleman at the last meeting said he wanted to run. I hope that other people might also want to run. It's not as bad as it looks. It's actually very rewarding sometimes and sometimes it's hard. So I've had a great experience, so I, I would recommend it. If you're interested, do it.
Okay. On to subcommittee reports.
The Policy Committee, we didn't meet audit first.
Oh, Audit Committee, I forgot. I got so many meetings I got. And we did have an Audit Committee meeting where we got a draft copy of the internal audit, which was well presented. I think this new internal auditor is quite good, although for next year, we're going to go out to bid because every few years, you really should do that. And I guess the other thing we did there, we discussed amongst ourselves what might be the areas that we would want the internal auditor to look at in this coming next year. About covers, I think, yeah.
Okay. Any more committee reports? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
This is also, on this, in the personnel matters, we'll be voting in our superintendent starting in the fall. Aviva will be our new superintendent. So, is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you. I'm really excited and I also just want to say how much I appreciate all of the people who have reached out. And it just, it means a lot. So thank you.
And we'll move on to new business. Can I have a motion for 11.1 Special Education placements?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.2 Special Education District Plan for 2021?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.3 Memorandum of Agreement for SEDCAR Special Education Data Collection, Analysis, and Reporting. Correction, Abilities First, Inc.
General.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.4 Superintendent's Contract?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.5 Health and Welfare, 2019, 2020, Somers, Arlington and Pine Plains?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.6 Bid Award Athletics Fencing?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion?
What field is that for?
This is for the baseball field. And I was actually going to say something. This is the bullet aid. This is money that we can anticipate every year. And our, our local, actually it was our local assembly member, DeeDee Barrett, who secured this for us this year. We get about 50,000 every year, but we're not allowed to budget for it because it's just special aid. And so we can't plan on it. But it is one of the few times we get money with zero strings attached and we can do anything we want with it. So in our athletic community, certainly when we put the athletic facility together, the baseball team felt that, you know, they didn't really get to see a whole lot of benefits. The softball field is in great shape, but that's due to parents like yourself who did a lot of fundraising. So we did, we do try to say what needs to be done that, you know, otherwise couldn't be done. So with this year's funding, we redid the gymnasium at the, those wooden benches at Ralph R. Smith that are a hazard. So those have been recovered. We'll be inviting DeeDee for a little ribbon cutting and certainly let her know once the fencing is installed. We try to share the wealth with that funding. As the elementary principals know, we have dedicated next year's funding for flexible seating for our special needs students inside the classroom. So each year, we try to do something a little bit different. This year, we took care of one gymnasium and some fencing for the baseball field. Long, long answer, right?
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. At this time, we have a motion for second public participation.
Don't move.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. If you would like to address the Board, please go to the microphone and state your name. Again, it's three minutes per person, but second public participation is limited to 12 minutes. Seeing none, public participation is now closed. There is no other matters deemed necessary by the Board. There is no need for a second executive session. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you guys all for coming.